Hey, this is John Nervage. Just a quick note before we begin. So it's election season in Colorado Springs. We have a school board election going on as well as some propositions. I just wanted to do a quick note saying that we have actually endorsed Joe Schiff Shelton, who was actually part of our last interview that was uploaded. He's running for school board District 11. Overall, again, we felt like he was a very good candidate, represented a lot of very progressive values. So he's actually got our endorsement. And, you know, please vote in this election. It means local elections are just as important as national. So please, you know, make sure you fill in your mail-in ballot, get that sent in by November 5th, or if you want to vote in person, vote November 5th at your local precinct. So without further ado, here's our next interview with Ken Shower, who's running for County Commissioner in District 3 in El Paso County in 2020. Thanks.
Hey, I'm John Nervage, here with Our Revolution Colorado Springs. And with me is Ken Shower, who's running for El Paso County Commissioner.
District 3.
District 3. I think the first question, and this is something I just asking people, like honestly, I just don't really know what County Commissioners do.
Oh, that's...
Which is like, you know, maybe it's ignorance on my part, but you know, can you explain a little bit about, you know, the position you're running for and really like how that position influences, you know, our lives?
County Commissioners is easily the most important office that impacts your day-to-day life that we have. It oversees county health services, it oversees the Sheriff's Department, it oversees zoning and development of the county itself. And that includes everything from mining permits to if they're going to build a new housing development out east in El Paso County. So they have a tremendous amount of authority and they oversee a very large budget. They're an executive branch, so they're supposed to oversee and implement the laws that are passed out from Denver. So, and they receive federal, state, and county monies through usually through property taxes how it's raised here, right here in El Paso County. And they use that money then to pay for the services that they're supposed to be providing. It's a constitutional, it's in the Colorado Constitution that we will have the number of, the number of salaried county commissioners that we have. With our population here, we have five. A lot of counties only have three. So that's, that's kind of how that breaks down.
So is it broken up then by like this, you said District 3 in particular?
District, District 3, which is the west side of the county. It runs, it runs along precinct lines. There's about 64 precincts that are actually part of District 3. So it's a very large area. It runs all the way from the north part of the, all the way down to 115, west of 115 down past Turkey Creek.
So that covers like a lot of like rural area then?
It does, especially, especially District 3. Yes, and it covers, you know, it has, it has a lot of the wild spaces that we have to protect for wildfire mitigation, everything else, which falls underneath the county.
Okay, yeah, so like all of that would come out of your, your job would be managing that budget, making sure that they get the resources allocated to them?
Yes, and commission studies and make sure that you're not developing a mine on top of a watershed, which the current county commissioners more than happy to do down there on Turkey Creek. But luckily that stalled out in court, so the landlords down there don't have to worry about their water getting polluted.
Yeah, that's what's good, it's interesting because, you know, for how important of a position this sounds, even like, you know, the path, you know, the person you're running against, like, I couldn't find that much information on what they've done and what, you know, what has been done in the past in this position. So that's a little bit, just, you know, kind of interesting that like, you know, there's not this sort of information available that's just like, I can't just Google like...
You'd think, you'd think for their job that important that you'd find out more about. I'm running against Stan Vanderwork, who is a very good family man. He's a very, he's a very ardent Trump supporter. So we're at odds there. He's a very much, he's very much kind of your classic big business conservative.
Yeah, looking at his profile, like I saw he was like a, he had like a CEO position for engineering firms, like how does that counter what you would think, like what you represent or what you...
Well, I'm definitely on the blue collar side of things. I, I come from a small ranch in Montana. Parents were teachers. I'm an electrician by trade. I came here because of the Air Force. So yeah, it's, I'm, my path, he came as a commissioned officer, I came as a enlisted man to this area, and I am very much a blue collar middle-class American.
Yeah, and more, you know, probably more like a worker?
Oh yes, no, I work with my tools today. So I was, I was wiring up, wiring up VABs they're called, which does building automation stuff. So it's, it's fun being an electrician. Very challenging.
Yeah, and I think like, look, because I live on the west side of Colorado Springs, so yeah, and you're going to be in that area, there's like a lot of construction, a lot of like, you know, road development and honestly, from what I, the biggest problem that I have with the, are that west side is like the lack of good public transportation.
Yes.
Like it's really hard to get from, you know, one area, even like the bus system, like it's hard to get from one end of the city to the other, let alone from like west Colorado Springs to like, you know, Denver or Fort Collins. Like there's really not a good public transit system in El Paso.
Or in Colorado in general. It's a major, it's a major flaw that we have in our, the way that we develop stuff. And the way that RTB actually develops their maps and everything else isn't, isn't geomapped. So they don't necessarily look at the density of the ridership that's needed to reach the places that are needed, that people need to reach. I spoke with a person who does geomapping, and they had developed a plan that would actually move, wouldn't change the service, but it would move some of the bus stops and everything else and some of the bus routes to areas that would better serve the community. And that idea was roundly rejected because, well, change would cost only $10,000, we can't do that. And so like, but if you're serving the community, you will make that money back in spades.
Yeah, you think that public support's there in this, that area for, I mean, like, I know I would benefit from it, I think a lot of people would benefit from it, but you know, you're running this thing with, you know...
When you, when you get into the weeds of, when you start to do some of the minutia of government stuff, public support isn't necessary, I don't, isn't as necessary. If the public starts to benefit, they will support it. They won't even realize it's happening. A lot of the ridership that would be impacted by this may not be as clued into the county level. I mean, let's be honest, how many of us are actually truly clued into what the county's doing day-to-day? And that's, and that's, that's a shame because the county's impacting their lives in a major way. So, but it's, so when you start talking, I think if people saw an immediate cost-benefit analysis of what happens when you put workers in line with where they're going to work, or people who need services in line with the services that they need through a proper ridership and a proper RTB program, we would, we would see the benefits immediately.
Yeah, like I, I think of an example, I lived in Kansas City, and when I was living there, there was this, you know, initiative to try to get like a public streetcar going from like, you know, one end of the downtown to the other. It's really short, not that long of a span, but even that little bit was like, you know, there was a lot of people like against it, thinking like, oh, it's gonna, you know, bring in crime, it's gonna, you know, cost too much, all that stuff. But since that implementation, that areas, surrounding areas actually made more money because it's brought business. And like everyone I've talked to, young and old, everyone's been in support of it, saying, oh, this is great, it's, you know, it's free for one thing. And two, like, you know, they don't need to worry about downtown parking, which is like, again, especially like, you know, even downtown Colorado Springs and like, you know, old Colorado City, like parking can be...
A real bugger, yes.
Yeah, pain sometimes, so, yeah, I think, I agree with that.
And nobody wants a parking structure.
Yeah, nobody, yeah, nobody wants a parking garage, especially when you're like, you're down to that area, like you're gonna block beautiful scenery of...
Pike's Peak, yeah.
...the gods and Pike's Peak, yeah. So, yeah, and I think the other thing, you know, public transit, you know, kind of plays into is the idea of like, you know, getting us to be more energy independent.
It definitely is a massive step forward for carbon neutrality. The United States was definitely based upon, wasn't based upon, and developed into a country that relied upon automobiles to get from point A to point B. We have the most extensive road system in the world, right here in the United States. That does not necessarily equate to something that's good for the world, because when you have, you know, 700,000 people living in the county and they're driving, you know, 1 million cars, that's a problem. I mean, it's, I don't, those numbers aren't hard, don't poke me off those numbers.
Yeah, and I think, you know, so what else can, you know, County Commissioners do to help, you know, incentivize or work to try to mitigate the damage of climate change?
So one of the things that they can do is they can put, they can put caveats on, on their permits, saying if you're gonna go ahead and develop a brand-new chunk of the prairie out east, you're gonna need, you're gonna need to not have HOAs that demand grass. And the number one pollutant in this country is the homeowner with their, with their yards, their green yards. It's, it's causing a tremendous amount of stuff to flow downstream, and we're at headwaters here. What happens here in El Paso County directly impacts the Gulf of Mexico. And that is, that is, that is a major responsibility that we need to take very seriously right here in town. So we need to make sure that when we do new developments, that we look at putting solar on rooftops, or making sure that we have, that we do the zoning not just for another power, coal-burning power plant, but let's look at zoning for windmills. We have, we have great resource in wind right here in El Paso County we should be using. And of course, we have more sun than anywhere else I've ever lived. The sun sign trying to, Colorado's hidden secret is weather, so...
Yeah, I think it's maybe a little bit more sunny than Montana, I don't know.
Oh, no, it's quite a bit sunnier than where I grew up. So it's, it is so phenomenally beautiful here, why aren't we harvesting that? It's free, let's use it.
Yeah, I mean, and protecting like, you know, the public, you know, beauty, you know, that, making sure that, you know, Pike's Peak is accessible and stays beautiful and not full of land, you know, landfill, turns into a landfill or like Garden of the Gods as well, like what do you, or what's your stance on, you know, keeping that scenery there and bringing, you know, good tourism that the local parks do?
Whenever you start to deal with the public spaces, the commons, as the British would call them, that is such a critical responsibility. We have to be good stewards of the land that we are, we are given. We have to make sure that people understand if they go into these areas, that they need to treat it with respect and dignity, because it's not just for them, it's for everybody. And so one of the ways that we can make sure is we're not randomly trying to frack Garden of the Gods or something really asinine and dumb like that. But we actually make sure, we're also not trying to cut into our public spaces, like what happened with Strawberry Fields and everything else. Make sure that the land deals, just because someone looks at this beautiful chunk of land and sees dollar signs, that's not acceptable. They should look at that though, they should look at that chunk of land and say, this is something I want to preserve from my great, great, great ranch.
Oh, you referenced Strawberry Fields, can you give a little more detail on what that is, for those who don't know?
That dealt with the city, and it dealt with a land parcel exchange, where they took a big chunk of beautiful space and they transferred, they changed it for something that was equal in value that was much smaller. So it was a very contentious thing that really split our city council. Luckily, that was not the county that had made those ultimate decisions, that was city council that asked all of that. But I'm sure, I'm sure if it had come to our county commissioners, they'd have been all for it.
Yeah.
The way moneyed interests care about this.
Yeah, that sadly usually is the case. So the other issue I always, you know, I see on the west side is, you know, lack of affordable housing.
Oh yes, major issue.
Major issue, especially in, you know, the homeless population, I see it in the area as well. I know there's a lot of complaints about, there's too many homeless people, you know, and then they don't have really good, it seemed like there's been a solution on how to handle that problem with the past county commissioner.
Right, that's, one of the problems that people have is they just, they don't want to see the homeless, so it's like, bust them out of here. It's like, that idea may work until they put them on a bus and bust them right back. That's, that does not treat the people that are suffering from homelessness with dignity and respect. Homelessness does not necessarily start in Colorado Springs, it can quite often wind up here. It could start in Payton, it could start in Calhoun, it could start up in Green Mountain Falls. A business closes, somebody becomes homeless because of loss of job, and they end up moving to Colorado Springs trying to find a job. So for a solution, this is where county commissioners are so critical. For homelessness requires that all the counties in El, in Colorado come together and bring a roundtable discussion, at least monthly, to discuss how we're going to address homelessness in every county at every level. Because every, it all feeds into central places. And there's even reports that Denver supposedly busing homeless down here to Colorado Springs, which is, once again, that's just kicking a can to us, and then our solution is to bust back, I don't know what, people say that, but it just drives me a little bonkers. So what they've determined in a lot of areas that are suffering from extreme stress caused by homelessness, I think like Los Angeles, or your major urban centers in particular, that have nice weather, so even Florida and places like that, what they found is the best cure for homelessness is rapid rehousing. So basically, the best cure for homelessness is to give people homes. So we have to make sure that there is a streamlined process where if somebody does lose their place, that the services are there to quickly, without, with the most minimal amount of interruption to their lives, make sure they have a home and a residence, so it doesn't start to impact their work, it doesn't impact their family, it doesn't impact their school districts that they live in. I mean, it just, the ripple effect of homelessness needs to be stopped as soon as it starts. And we have to identify those trouble areas and we need to work on it quickly. And that's something that county health services, there's signs up all around town that say, you know, don't give handouts, there's services available, call this number, call the number, and the services are pretty neat. So if you're gonna, if you're gonna say something like that, you better offer services. And the whole homeless people should just get a, excuse me, this one irritates me. The homeless people should just get a job, it's like, oh really? You want them to go work a minimum wage job if they can get the job in the first place because they don't have a prime address?
Yeah.
And they can make more money standing on the corner.
That's a pain, yeah, like, you know, if you...
And it's not a ton more, but it's more.
And especially like, you know, one of the next things I'm gonna go into is, you know, rent control, like just the, the cost of owning a house in general is, I mean, you can't afford that with even, you know, I'd say like a $10 an hour wage, you need to work definitely multiple jobs. Even that is, I find it really difficult to live in this, in this sort of area.
So yeah, you end up, you end up working three jobs to afford a place to live that you're never gonna see, you know, because of place for you to sleep. That's not acceptable either, you know, where's your, where's your eight hours of leisure that were supposed to be promised in this great country? It's, it's, rent control is, is a very sticky subject that can really cause people to go up in arms, because they, they want to be able to charge market value for their apartment.
Yeah.
But the thing about it is, when you look at a lot of these apartment complexes around town that have been built in the 70s, and they're renting them out and they just keep jacking up the rent, you can't tell me that building and land hasn't been paid for for decades. And they're just, alls they're doing now is just profiteering. And when you have landlords that are just profiteering, you end up with people who end up with a lot of political power. And one of the biggest slum lords in this darn community was Douglas Bruce, who was the author of Tater. So when you start to talk about major issues that we have in this state, it was caused by a slum lord who liked to profitize off the people that were the most vulnerable in our society. And I find that to be just, that really, really fundamentally upsets me.
Yeah, and I see a lot of, you know, cases too where a house comes on the market, you know, relatively affordable for someone who has a decent job, and then, you know, they do a little bit of renovations, and then it's on the market again a couple months later for, you know, twice or three times as much. And it's just, it's tough to have, you know, that sort of initial, you have to jump on it, and you can't really think about it, because someone, a housing developer will come along and buy it and, you know, flip it.
It's even worse than the housing developer buying. The housing bubble was, when it burst in 2008, did you ever listen to that podcast, The Giant Pool of Money from This American Life?
I don't believe so, no.
It's the most downloaded podcast they've ever had. It's well worth the time and effort to download a giant pool of money. Just Google it, find it, download it, listen to it, you'll understand, it gives you a very good overview of exactly what caused the housing crisis. Well, what the banks were doing was they were taking a bunch of mortgages together and lumping them together, and I'm sure you know this, but they were lumping them together with mortgages that were iffy, mortgages that they were lending out to people who should never have had them. And that was called toxic assets. And the idea was that the good mortgages would counterbalance the bad mortgages. But when the market, when the, when the economy turned south, they promptly, all the, they started defaulting at a rate faster than these, these, these subprime mortgages and everything, everything, everything collapsed. And trillions of dollars shrunk and disappeared overnight. It was, it was very, very scary. So what they did, the solution with that was Congress got together and slapped a few hands and said, no, we're not gonna do this again. So the banking industry then turned around and proceeded to start buying houses and holding on to them, and then renting them out, and controlling the housing market that way. So you have a renting problem that's being created by banks owning houses, something they should not be allowed to do. Banks should not have assets on their sheets and say that.
Yeah, that kind of seems like a...
Conflict of interest.
Conflict of interest, yeah.
Very much so. And that's the next major, and now you can buy, you can go on to the, into the banking industry, and you can buy these lumped, grouped together, and basically it's a bunch of rents. So you can get a whole bunch of rental properties that you can invest in. Tell me now, that's not even more toxic than the toxic assets that caused the 2008 crash?
Yeah, so, you know, one of your initiatives would be to, you know, support more affordable housing?
Oh, very much so, very much so. If you build 100 units, you better have some affordable housing in there. And you can also do it in gradations, because, so when you say affordable housing, there's a lot of, you get a lot of pushback, because they immediately picture Section 8 housing, they immediately picture the scum of the earth, just crap. And that's, and that's the sad thing about it, is we have these people who like to profit, profiteer off the poorest in our society, and that just drives me, once again, these are the sort of things that can keep me up at night sad and angry, because there's so little we can do. County Commissioners do have the ability to not only go for affordable housing, but also working-family affordable housing. So it may not be the Section 8 housing that you're picturing, it might be houses that are priced in the range where somebody who's working as a journeyman electrician can go buy this house, right up, you know, right as soon as they turn out with their tools. Because right now apprentices cannot go buy a house.
Yeah.
And that's, I bought a house as an apprentice 15 years ago. So come on now, the market has not shifted that radically.
Yeah, I mean...
There's other forces and there's other pressures.
Yeah, and like, you know, wage growth is pretty much stagnant, we consider inflation and everything else, and the cost of living in general, I mean, especially, like there was a report recently, Colorado Springs has a higher cost of living on average than other, you know, than other places in the country, it's higher, higher than it. Before it was always below the average rate in America, now it's actually above it for the first time, I think in, I think like 2005 or something.
And one of the most beautiful things I've seen our current Colorado leadership has done, was pass the bill that allowed for him, Governor Polis signed it, saying that we could have regional control over minimum wage. Denver's jumping on board with that right now, they're gonna have higher minimum wage than the 15 bucks an hour within a couple of years. They're good, they have to get it passed first, but the support, the mayor's on board, the city council's on board, everybody's on, I mean, all the right people are on board. UOCW is doing a full, United Food and Commercial Workers, sorry, I'm a union guy, I have a tendency to use a lot of acronyms. United Food and Commercial Workers has a full campaign going to support this, because that will be a good strategy for them to increase the wages and the living conditions for the people that work in our grocery stores and are doing retail. Which is a good career, it should be a good career, by the way. That's, that's, people go, if you go to a regular grocery store, you see the same people for years. And that should be, that's, that's a good service to the community that we all use and need, we all need food. So that being said, a couple of years back, they held a, they brought in a high-flut and very powerful economist to analyze the El Paso County and its regions, surrounding regions, the nine municipalities right here in the area, and say, what is needed for this area to help it grow? And they thought that they, you know, by bringing in a good conservative think tank, that they would get some good conservative people, should pull themselves up by the bootstraps. But the very first thing that the gal reported, she got up and she said, the very first thing this region needs to do is dramatically increase minimum wage right here in El Paso County, right the hell now. And people got up and left, they were like, I can't believe this, this highly-trained economist would say something like that. It's like, if you're not paying people enough, they can't live.
Yeah.
And if you can't afford to pay someone enough, you're not making enough money as your business. And you're marketing somebody else's labor. And if you're not marketing it properly, you're not gonna be able to pay them enough. And that's, as electrical contractors, if they can't afford to pay the electricians enough, that means they underbid the job. And that's just, that's a problem on their end.
Yeah, yeah, and I see, you know, around this country, you see like these sort of migrations, where I mean, in this area, you got a lot of people moving in from Texas, and there's a lot of people moving out of Colorado to, you know, other areas, like there's like this sort of like, you know, migration of workers just going from, you know, places that used to be able to afford, but can't anymore, to, you know, kind of following as well the jobs and things like...
Yeah, they moved to where it's, where, you know, the cost of living is lower. You always hear the cost of living is lower.
Yeah.
And I personally don't want to do that, I'd much rather sit here and think, that's what I love about Colorado is always, I mean, I already love Colorado, so why don't I sit here and work on fixing it?
Yeah.
So, and we can definitely do that for the county commissioners, see if we can make a dramatic impact, it would really help the average, everyday working family right here in El Paso County, so.
Hey, this is John, just a quick break here to remind you that Our Revolution Colorado Springs is 100% donation-based organization. So if you like what you're hearing and want to hear more interviews from us in the future, please donate at ActBlue at Our Revolution Colorado Springs. We also are gonna be doing a lot of events in not November. We have our general meetings, and we have a lot of canvassing events, as well as a debate watch party for the, for the next debate. So you can find those, that information on our website, areevolutioncs.com, or our Facebook page, meetup, basically any social media site, hopefully we should have some presence there. So without taking up any more of your time, here's the second half of our interview with Ken Shower, who's running for County Commissioner of El Paso, District 3. Thanks.
Hey, yeah, so, you know, talking to about El Paso County in general, again, a lot of it is in like the more rural districts. And I think that, you know, there's a lot to be said about, you know, trying to reach out to those people in particular. Like what is, what are your like initiatives, like, you know, target the rural communities of El Paso County?
So rural development has long-term stormwater impacts and everything else, but when you put in a new housing community, that's supposed to be like a commuter community, maybe that's what they're calling them now? So they're far outside of the center of town.
So like would Woodland Park be like that, or is that even further?
Well, you're talking, we're head east, that's where you're really, north and east. Black Forest is, they're starting to build a lot of, right outside there, there's huge housing developments going in right out there.
I see, okay.
And what they're, one of the things that you have to watch out for, of course, always is stormwater drainage. Can't stress how important stormwater is to, that we need to be paying attention to as a county. We definitely want, don't want to be, have the EPA come in and tell us how to manage our stormwater. We want to be good stewards along the way. Another impact that you'll have is traffic on roads. You build 150 homes on a road, spontaneous, that little two-lane highway ain't gonna cut it.
Yeah, and I see that a lot in 25.
Yeah, exactly. All of a sudden, there's this huge glut of traffic, and people are like, where did this come from? Just built 150 homes with 300 cars.
Yeah.
You're gonna have issues. They also are not properly addressing fire districts. So you'll end up with underfunded firehouses, where they might get, they might bond the firehouse, but not be able to man it up. Or they might, they'll run into where the communities themselves start to have to hold bake sales, literally, down along 115, they hold a bake sale to keep their fire district, their volunteer fire district going.
It seems very dangerous.
And that's a place that has a fire almost every other week, because Fort Carson starts them all the dark time, with training exercises. So that's, that's a major stink.
They don't have their own fire?
They have their own fire district, but it's volunteer. And I mean, those, those guys work their tails.
But Fort Col, or Fort Carson does not supply their own?
They do on Fort Carson. The secondary, third, tertiary responsibility is the surrounding community that they're directly impacting.
Yeah.
So yeah, no, these are, and so if you, if you build a new huge set of housing developments and you don't account for fire districts, you have a major, major, major problem coming your way. Because emergency response is not, is, in the county, is well above the national average. I think we're hovering right around nine that.
Yeah.
And that's just not, that's bad development. That's developing without an eye towards how do we lower that number instead of, well, they're, they're not even looking at that number when they're developing, they don't care. And they should be caring, they should be caring very deeply. But I promise you, the first time your kid has a seizure, and he's three years old, and he's sitting on the couch, and he's got a seizure, and he's calling 911 morning, you count the seconds until the firefighters arrive to show you what to do.
Yeah.
And you don't want a nine-minute response time. And that one comes from personal experience. I live in an area that has a very fast response time.
Yeah.
Our friends in the rural area do not necessarily, and that's dangerous. And then when you, the other one that they'll do is, this is the end run, since they're not accounting, they're not holding the developers accountable, which is, as far as I can tell, is one of the only areas, the only counties in the country that's not doing this. They're not building new school districts. What they're doing is they're, they'll, they'll build all these houses and then say, okay, to service this, let's go ahead and just commission a charter school. And they use charter schools as an end run around all the requirements of a public education. And that's a major stink and problem we have developing. Now, north and east is you got these charter schools being built. And I must admit, one of the ugliest buildings I have ever worked on is a charter school. They do not care about any aesthetics for those kids. It's basically just a mill. And I'm, I am not a fan of charter schools. I do not think that they are serving our county properly.
Yeah, I mean, from a regulation standpoint, there's just less that you can do to like make.
Less, less standardized testing. They don't require the same level of, of highly trained professionals. And they're supposed to be training their men and women. They can turn away students if they, if the kid's too much of a problem for them, they can turn them away. And then they go, the, the few standardized tests that they actually do take and look how well our student, our school is performing. Yeah, when you just got rid of the, you know, bottom 10%, I imagine it's going to do very well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't find that acceptable.
So you can, as a county commissioner, create new school districts that would basically force like a private school to be developed in a certain area?
Not a private school, public.
Or a public school, yeah.
So the way to round that is a proposal that I really like from the fire, from the firefighters and the school districts up in, uh, up around Palmer Lake. Is, was to add a $750 fee to the sale of new homes to help pay for the schools and also to secure the bonding to build a new school. Um, grade schools cost like seven million dollars to build, uh, from the ground up and high schools cost like 22 million dollars. That's just spin ball numbers from the Education Association. So, um, to be able to, if you're going to build a whole thousand new homes, let's throw a one-time fee on the sale of a new home. And let's use that money to build the fire districts, to improve the roads, to do everything that needs to be done. To hold the, I mean, if you're going to build a new neighborhood, you need to, everything needs to go along with it.
Yeah. It helps it grow too, right? Helps bring in new business and ultimately is a good thing.
And I spoke with the fire chief that was having, had a tremendous amount of frustration with our county commissioners because they refused to even bring up a vote on this fee.
Just because they didn't want to, the idea of a tax burden or some sort of, of fee for?
Fiduciary responsibility, whatever it is. I don't, whatever, whatever, whatever they tell themselves at night to sleep better, you know?
How much, because you always hear about like, you know, like money and politics, like corporate, you know, corporate greed and influencing the way, you know, people, how much of that actually happens at the county commissioner? At least how much of that hasn't happened in the past?
So speaking to people down at the city hall that will oversee a lot of the, uh, the land use studies and everything else that goes into the effect of putting in the new stuff, they get harassed pretty heavily. By developers and their lawyers to make sure that things go their way. And this is, this is a known problem. And it's never spoken about and, and why. One of the things that, that I always find funny is you hear all these, this hand ringing about government corruption. And when it's actually going on, people just look the other way because it's their party doing it.
Yeah.
And that's, corruption's corruption.
Yeah.
Let's, let's deal with it. Let's root it out, let's shine a light on it and let's, no, you're not allowed in this building, whatever it takes. It's, and if you don't have a, if you don't have, if your county commissioners are not your ally when that happens, then you're alone. And your job is in jeopardy, your livelihood's in jeopardy. And that is a way that we hold people over the barrel.
Yep. Yeah. And going back to the firefighting in general, I mean, there's a large part of, uh, western El Paso County that's forested, right? And so, you know, we have Pike's Peak, you know, National Forest and how do you?
Volvo Canyon.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How do you?
That's a fairly famous one.
How do you, uh, regulate that? Cause I mean, obviously like, you know, you hear about forest fires that occur due to droughts in California and, uh, you know, basically destroying large sections of the, the country. Of course driving people out of their homes as well.
So fire mitigation is a, is a major issue obviously in El Paso County, a major issue in Colorado, you know, throughout the, throughout the country actually. So one of the ways that you can do that, of course, is through selective logging techniques to make sure the trees are, you know, dead, dead trees are removed from the spotted pine beetle kills. Uh, another method, and, and the county does work on that. They do actually commission people to do mitigation. The other thing to, to prevent the loss of people's homes and everything else is to make sure that they follow the proper mitigation techniques from the forest service. There's, you also have to watch out for, boy, I can't feel like I'm really hammering on it today, but stormwater issues. If there, if you don't have proper logging techniques in place, stormwater becomes a major issue because of runoff.
Yeah.
Which then creates a large amount of brush to grow up and brushes are very much a fire catalyst. Another thing that, another thing that the county oversees that is a major component of fire danger is the weed board. And they have to be able to mitigate noxious weeds to prevent the, the undergrowth that actually technically starts on fire. So if you have an underfunded weed board, then what you can have is you can have something like spotted knappweed that runs rampant in an area. And spotted knappweed actually perform, produces its own almost like form of petroleum. And when you burn it, you can actually hear it whistling and it burns really hot. And it can really start a fire quickly in an area. So not only do you have to be able to identify and see if there's a problem, know when your fire danger is high to, but you also, you've got to make sure, you have to make sure that the, when the fire does take off, it doesn't have as many places to go. Cause the last thing we're going to need them to do is to cross the hill and take out something, uh, kind of landmark like the Lang W Ranch.
Yeah.
And that was a, I mean, that was a terrifying time for us here in El Paso County. They, I live two blocks away from Holland Park, which was evacuated. They had to leave Coronado High School at the top of the hill that I live on, Fillmore Hill. In the middle of their report saying everything's fine and all of a sudden the wind shifted and it wasn't.
Yeah.
And that, that's, that's a terrifying time. So we have to be prepared and understand that county services have to be fully funded and critical to the combat, well, the best cure for a forest fire is prevention.
Yeah.
And I am open to selective logging techniques. I'm open to, um, selective logging techniques. We're not clear cutting because up in the inland northwest in Montana where I'm from, they always thought that selective logging up there was you could cut down five acres of trees and leave one tree standing in the middle of it all. And that poor tree was like traumatized from both buddies going away, so.
Yeah, probably not be good, uh, for forest prevention if you just cut down all of the trees.
Well, it would be perfect forest prevention.
Well, I guess it is, yeah, forest, not forest fire prevention.
No, it's not.
Kind of the point of it is to have a meeting in the forest.
And they found that that, that doesn't do any favors to anybody anywhere. So, but there is methods that we can use and there's, there's techniques that, that are well documented, uh, that are environmentally friendly and have a good impact in the area. There's other types of trees that we could be looking at planting ironically that are, that are resistant to fire, to forest fires. A lot of your old growth large trees.
Yeah, that was the other thing I was going to ask. So I know, uh, growing up in Minnesota, I mean, we had, obviously like there's forest, there's always forest fires that we hear about in, uh, Canada that kind of ekes down. We, we see the smoke and things, but like they have this different type of tree that doesn't, you know, burn as readily, right?
Right.
So.
And actually the bark is, and the pine cones won't even open unless the forest fire.
Yeah, and you also don't have like, you know, the insect infestation that causes massive.
Spotted pine beetle being a prime example here in Colorado. And that, when that nailed Montana and then it worked its way south, you could just see that devastation. And you could drive out the country here and see spotted pine beetle tell us everything, so.
Yeah.
And there's nothing really to do about spotted pine beetle that I'm aware of. Forest Service may have some other ideas, I don't know, it'd be interesting to talk to them.
Yes. And what was the name of its, um, water, valley water?
Oh Fountain Valley Water Coalition?
Yeah, Fountain Valley.
I think that's it.
Valley Fountain Water Coalition.
You're talking with Rosemaron Group?
Yeah.
Yeah, where they're working on, uh, the pollution coming from Peterson?
Yeah.
The, the pollution bloom.
So say, say one more time, someone asked.
Fountain Water Valley Coalition.
Fountain Valley Water Coalition.
And she always goes by the acronym like F W V C.
We can look it up real fast.
No, yeah, I have it on my Facebook, but I was, because you mentioned a lot.
I can call this and ask.
Yeah, well, you mentioned a lot about, you know, well water, uh, you know, being such a like a vital, important consideration for development and for treatment, uh, management or, you know, forest management. You know, having so many military bases.
As having a direct impact.
As having a direct, has had a direct impact on our water in the past, I mean.
And now they're concerned about well water around the Air Force cap.
Yeah.
This is, this is not a joke.
No, I mean, it's like, it's brought in, you know, millions of dollars to, for EPA to do these tests. And I mean, it's, it's costing a ton of money for something that, you know, arguably could have been prevented, uh, several decades ago, but instead it was kind of swept under the rug. And it's having health, you know, health effects on people who are, you know, getting cancer from, you know, these bad chemicals that were eking out of this fire, uh, jet fuel repellent.
That is, that is one aspect, but there's other things that El Paso County has done wrong that has nothing to do with the military. Military's done a lot of benefit here and a lot of, and they've, but that is one of the issues that they definitely need to start dealing with.
Yeah.
Federal government needs to step in and deal with that.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, it's not like, you know, you don't want to move away the military bases for sure. But I mean, like the fact that there's, you know, something that has caused, you know, detriment to the public in the area and that's not necessarily has been, I think, made clear to people.
So the Mesa Springs neighborhood, which is right in the center of town, um, exit 148-ish, Font Arrow, yeah, the interstate right there. Uh, up there, if you go up there right behind the VA clinic on top of Fillmore Hill, you'll see a great big field. And you wonder why has this not been developed? Hasn't been developed because it's an old illegal dump, a huge dump. And they barely covered it over and they, it was some clay and they, they moved on with their lives. And there's a stream that runs right through the middle of all that. That stream, they're doing water tests as we speak because there's so much crap coming into that spring now. They decided that, man, this is a big beautiful chunk right in the middle of town. We need to start developing this. And as soon as you drive anything over that land, it immediately disrupts this huge landfill underneath it.
Yeah, for sure.
And it was used by the hospital, it was used by, I mean, there's scary stuff buried six inches deep there. And it's, and it's, and as they're kicking stuff up, the air quality has plummeted in this beautiful, beautiful neighborhood, beautiful views of Pike's Peak. It's, it's a truly established older neighborhood.
Pretty good penny, I need to have a house there too. But you're literally, it's literally built on trash.
Yeah, well, you're not going to buy one of those houses because those haven't been built. They're trying to, they're really over trying, but it's, they're, you know, there's, they're obviously giving pushback from the community. It's a major, I suspect, I can't say this for a fact, but I suspect that's a major reason why Font Arrow hasn't been tied over to Centennial yet. It's because they're like, well, to do this, we're going to have to build right over the top of the old dump. And that's bad. So, and that's just right here.
Yeah.
I mean, that's downtown Colorado Springs.
Yeah, it's not far away.
Yeah, it's, it's two minutes from downtown Colorado Springs. And then you have other issues where we had old mining that people forgot about.
Yeah.
Nailing like the Rock Reminary, they got sinkholes and other issues developing there and that's impacting the water quality there. So it's not just the military bases polluting our groundwater. Past practices have done a number on us also.
Yeah.
And that's why it's so critical that before we do anything moving forward, we don't repeat the sins of our fathers.
Yeah.
We do a good job moving forward.
Yeah, cause I think, you know, Colorado Springs has had like a, a pretty interesting history, especially like, you know, you know, mining history, you know.
The military.
Military history.
General Palmer, uh.
Yeah, I mean.
McAllister.
The fact that you have, you know, like Drake Power Plant opening literally right next to the downtown, which I had never seen in any other city, really.
I've worked on that power plant, yeah. Yeah, it's, uh, it's interesting.
Yeah.
I find it really fascinating that we think it's a good idea to dig up a bunch of dirt from Wyoming, throw it on a train, drive it down here and then burn it. Coal boggles my mind. It's, we've, try to tell me in the history of coal where it was, I know, I know it drove the industrial revolution.
Yeah.
But when you actually study the industrial revolution, what they, they moved away from water wheels that drove machinery. And they were like, we were able to move away from major waterways and do this. And you're like, yeah, but you're burning dirt.
Yeah, considering it's, you know, such an old technology that, you know, yeah, it did have a lot, a big impact in the United States history in general. But it is no longer the cheapest and no longer obviously the safest, safest source of energy.
Now there's push for natural gas. I wonder who thinks it's a good idea to shove a bunch, to explode stuff underground and think, oh, this one hurt us.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, there is, we have some logistical problems that we really desperately need to deal with.
Yeah, I mean, like they're, they're talking about adding like a, you know, they approved a new stadium downtown. So people are going to be coming in from out of state. People already, you know, tourism, tourism is already a big part of our economy. And you see a giant coal burning power plant and many.
Right next to America the Beautiful Park.
Yeah, exactly. So it's kind of, uh, kind of contradictory.
Yeah, and you know, the, the fine men and women who work at Colorado Springs Utilities need to be able to, when we transition away from Drake, need to be able to have jobs with, uh, have, be able to move into a new, into the new industry.
Yeah.
With justice and parity because the last thing we want to do is take somebody who's making eighty thousand dollars a year supporting their entire family and get rid of their job and say, good luck.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, like the coal, the coal workers, the people who are working in coal mine, the people working at Drake, they're not the, the enemy.
No, definitely not.
Yeah, and I mean.
There are a lot of my union brothers and sisters down there.
Yeah.
They're darn good people.
And you hear a lot about, you know, this idea of a just transition for those workers where they can move, move over to a new industry, probably likely a higher paying industry.
Right.
And even if they don't have the education, you can get, get education for some, some means.
So one of the things I worked on this last year was the just and equitable transition of to the new green, to a more green economy.
Yeah.
Jared Polis has a very aggressive plan to make us all energy renewable by 2040. But to do that, we have to make sure that the right regulations and policies go in on these new industries. We don't want, um, FBN Electric, as we call them, fly by night electric, some out of state group coming in with a bunch of people who aren't licensed, slapping up a bunch of solar farms that are going to fail in a week and a half.
Yeah.
And then, then scooting for the border.
Yeah, because that's what you hear a lot about too, like, oh, the idea that, you know, solar power isn't as efficient or is more expensive. And I don't think that's necessarily true.
It's not the case anymore.
It's just when it's for profit and you're, you're trying to make it as cheap as possible, then, I mean, that's anything. You, you try to, you know, make something very, very cheap and you get the, you know, the, the budget option, uh, you're probably.
So it's energy, energy storage is a problem there. And there's ways that we, we started to mitigate the, the costs associated with that. The number one draw on electric power plant is called inductive load, which is your motors and your transformers found in, uh, like fluorescent, uh, lighting.
Yeah.
Uh, and those, that causes a major draw on power plants. Electrician, I geek out about this stuff. Uh, and the way that you deal with that is capacitance, because the opposite of inductive is capacitance. And we have, through, uh, very, very intelligent initiatives put forth by the Obama administration, we have started to upgrade our grid in such a way that it deals with the inductive hit. And the storage of power to be so that way, when the sun's not shining, we still have electricity.
Yeah.
If the wind does manage to stop blowing out east, which I don't think it ever has, but hypothetically if it did, then we have a way to still keep the lights on.
Yeah. Yeah, and yeah, for sure. I think, and there's been, you know, innovations even recently that made, has made solar power more efficient. And yeah, innovations that allow us to store more power.
Very much so.
And, you know, these basically large, large scale batteries, I like to think of them.
Uh, Australia a couple of years back came up with a brilliant idea of using compressed air in a rotary shaft engine. And rotary shaft engines only take one PSI to start spinning. So they started using compressed air for their generators.
That could be a problem though, right?
Use solar powers to run a compressor, build up air and then it just ba, 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 and it powers up the generator. It's, it's a clean loop. It's.
But it's, oh, as long as it's compressor, I guess when I think of compressor, I'm thinking of like the stuff that's potentially bad for the ozone.
No, no.
Talking about just.
When I'm talking about compressor, I'm talking about your air compressor in your garage that you use to fill up your bike tires.
Yeah.
That one.
Yeah.
That's what they're doing. So it's not even like a can of something with, you know, acronyms that I don't remember off the top of my head that get involved. No, this is honest to God, pump air into a tank and then pump it back out at night. And you have solutions like that and you're just like, and they're using it. They have rack mounted generator. And that was one of the, that was one of the initiatives that they looked at during the Obama administration is how do we really ramp this up? Underground natural storage of air. Pump it up during the day, pump it out during, at night to power up generators.
Yeah.
So these are, these are solutions that we have out there that we need to be looking at as a county to develop a better, cleaner.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, talking, you know, just about energy efficiency in general, like obviously what that goes to support is you combating climate change in general.
Which, which we, we have to do.
Yeah, and I think you have to address it, you know, through every, you know, every facet. I think there's been a lot of white policies that have come through, uh, even in recent, you know, democratic debates where, you know, people talk about, oh, it's, something's going to cost too much or, you know, you're, you're not, it's, it's going to occur too quickly. I mean, we don't have time to dilly dally and worry about, you know, I mean, you have to worry about the finances of it, but when you have policies that, you know, can create millions and millions of jobs. And can basically lead to a future where, you know, our kids and grandkids aren't going to.
There's more people employed in renewable energy than there is in the old.
Yeah, and that's the other thing that people, you know, you, there's a lot of money in pumping, you know, campaigns to try to say that, you know, this is a huge industry. I mean, this even happened, I think, in the last election in Colorado with the fracking.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they had the two initiatives on the ballot trying to deal with it.
Yeah. Yeah.
And they were a mess. They just don't, people don't, they see, one hand, they see jobs, we want jobs. On the other hand, you know, but what about tomorrow?
Yeah.
And it is, it is a tight rope because you, it's all for, we can't live only for tomorrow, we have to also live for today. But we should be living for today with an eye on tomorrow.
For sure. I would almost say that, yeah, to a certain extent that worrying about the future, uh, again, for our kids and grandkids is, almost takes precedent, I'd say over, I mean, at least that's how my parents raised me and.
Oh, yeah.
My grandparents, it was always about trying to provide a better future for, you know, tomorrow, so.
Always, if you're not working towards a better future, then what are you working towards? And one of the ways that, and this is one thing I really like about, uh, Our Revolution is, is they, they focus heavily on, uh, income inequality. Because when you start to focus on the now, when you're only focusing on just surviving, is when you do not have any breathing room in your own budget.
Yeah.
To get people to be able to care about tomorrow, they have to be able to live comfortably today.
You have to have, you know, shelter, affordable housing, you need to have access to food. That's, you know, basically making sure the cost of living isn't too high and you have decent salary to support yourself and obviously access to Medicare.
Oh, yeah.
Some sort of healthcare in general with, yeah, through Medicare for all, you wouldn't need to worry about any of that. I mean, it's, you, I always think of a, you know, Maslow's hierarchy of needs, right? Where you have like these basic needs that you need to address. Uh, and if you address those, then, you know, you'll just prosper in the future, uh, so.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah.
It's a major, uh, Medicare for all has, is one of those solutions that has long-term impacts on county health services. It would really free up some money in our budget. And you go, oh, the cost, the cost. I love, I loved when they first proposed this at the very first debate and the Republicans came out and it'll cost 32 trillion dollars.
Yeah.
And it's like, let's crunch those numbers. How many Americans are there? 320 million ish, so 32 trillion divided by three. So thirty-two trillion divided by three hundred and twenty million is a hundred thousand dollars per person. Does that make sense? No. It's not going to cost that much. So.
And I mean, I guess we pay more for our healthcare than any other modern, or modernized country.
More than twice as much.
More as twice as much. I mean.
And we get less.
Yeah. And I mean, I was getting to a point too where even people don't wanna call the nine one one or don't want emergency services cause they're afraid they're not gonna be able to afford it. I mean, that's barbaric.
You know, that was the thing. I called the fire department, uh, to my son when he had a seizure. And that's where that story came from earlier. And they showed up. And, uh, then they're like, he needs to go to the hospital. Okay. And the ambulance driver's standing there waiting. And I said, I will drive him down there myself.
Yeah.
And if he had had a seizure while I was driving, I would not have been a safe driver. But I, my son's life is on the line. And I'm thinking to myself, we won't be able to feed him once we get this stupid ambulance ride.
Yeah, it's ridiculous.
So I mean, there's an eye to the future focusing on the now.
Yeah, exactly.
No. And so I drove him down there and he had another seizure while I was getting checked into the emergency. So I hit the window where he was not seized.
Yeah.
And that's, let me tell you something. When you see something like that, I don't care who you are, it's gonna rock your world and why you don't wanna have it rocked.
Yeah.
And we should not be worried about. I shouldn't be worried about my damn checkbook when my son's life is in jeopardy.
Yeah.
And that's, that's something. And that's garbage. And there's so many people that go through that. We had a guy, we had an electrician, uh, a couple of years back, uh, working on a project who refused to go to the emergency room because of the cost until it was too late. He went, he worked all day Friday coughing and hacking like, dude, you need to go home. You need to get, I gotta work. I gotta, I gotta pay my bills. He went that night to the emergency room. He was dead by midnight from pneumonia. This was a union electrician with union coverage. We have some of the finest insurance in the country and he was too scared to miss work to go do that. We need paid sick time and we need universal coverage.
Yeah.
And the cost will go down.
Yeah.
It will be cheaper for every American if we do that. Point blank cheaper.
So you have some experience working in the union. Something that, you know, I, I know this isn't necessarily related to your county commissioner, so I apologize. But not too many, not, I don't think we've ever had anyone come in who's actually been a part of like the union process or has some experience with that. And something that we hear, uh, as like against Medicare for All is this idea that, you know, if you're gonna lose, potentially lose your benefits or you're gonna lose your, the coverage that your union negotiated for, and you're basically gonna get less coverage because of it. How does like, help me understand that argument. Cause like, I don't really understand, uh, what that's actually trying to say.
So there are some people in the union who feel that it's a value add that the union offers, that we offer this healthcare that follows us from job to job.
Yeah.
My healthcare as a union electrician does not come from the contractor. It's not like, it comes from the eighth district, which is the district that we're organized under for our healthcare for the union. So, um, if I work in Wyoming, Montana, uh, you know, if I go on the road working, my same exact healthcare benefits follow me from place to place. If I work for five different contractors throughout the year, I don't see any interruption with my coverage because the union provides the coverage. So you have some people who are concerned about value add on this. One of the major problems that we have though, is when you have a small shop starting up. And they first, you got two guys and they got a van and they decide they're gonna go start their own new shop.
Yeah.
What they'll do then is they'll be covered by their wife to have health insurance during that time because paying for this Cadillac insurance, it's not cheap.
Yeah, for sure.
Once they break over to a certain number of employees, then they have to go on the insurance, the district insurance. And that's, that's just so weak. The pool. And we lose small contractors at that point. Those contractors will then go non-union and build up. And that's a major stinking problem that we have. And it undermines the entire labor movement.
Yeah.
So the, the, the people that feel that union benefits are a value add and therefore we don't wanna, we don't wanna go from, come on now. We have fought, we didn't fight for the eight hour workday for, we didn't fight for weekends just for union members.
Yeah.
We didn't fight for all the stuff that unions have brought to our society just for a small group of people. This is not a special, this is not a country club. We're trying to change the world for better. And as a union leader, cause I am a union leader, you know that, I'm president of Colorado Springs Area Labor Council, treasurer of IBW number one thirteen.
Yeah.
Vice president of Colorado AFL-CIO. I am an honest to God, dyed-in-the-wool union leader. I do almost all that on voluntary time, by the way. Um, one of the things that we need to be doing is when we improve all of society, then we get to go on to the next big battle. So if we can bring Medicare for All for every last year, if we can get universal healthcare right the hell now, then we can start working on the next major fight. And that's what we, we don't need to be focusing on these fights that we've been focusing on for the last hundred years.
Yeah.
Let's move on to the next one. So, little passionate about it.
Yeah, it's good.